Folks, we have about two minutes prior to the broadcast. We cannot begin until seven o'clock. However, I wanted to ask Mr. and Mrs. Knute, would you want to dial up Ben to see if he's out shopping or ready for the call? Your phone, you can put it right at that recording device. Let's surprise him. Let's get him on the phone and see what he's doing.
Okay.
You've already got him on speakerphone?
Maybe I'll leave him a voicemail.
Hello?
Uh, Ben, this is your dad.
Yeah.
You're on speakerphone and you are in the Geneva City Council chamber in front of the mayor and the city council in a packed chamber, so I'm going to put you on the microphone.
All right. Hi, everyone. It takes care of you.
Ben, earlier this evening, your mom and dad raised the Olympic flag outside of City Hall.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? It's a little hard to hear.
Says your mom and dad aren't coming to Rio.
You said they are going to Rio?
Can you hear me now, Ben?
Yeah, that's a little bit better.
Earlier this evening, your mom and dad raised the Olympic flag outside of City Hall in your honor and in celebration of your accomplishments. So we hope that that will not only bring you safety, it'll also bring you success. And we're about to begin the council meeting where we have another couple gifts for you, so I'd like to, without objection, call this meeting to order and kindly ask our city clerk to please read the roll call.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much. It's such an honor to have the Olympic flag raised in my honor. Uh, yeah, just thank you and I want to thank the city of Geneva and everybody who's present there and who's wishing you luck.
Well, Ben, your picture's on our screen right now. Looks like you've looked.
Oh, man, which one is it?
Plus, we've got your, um...
Excuse me, with my parents there.
I almost said you're kind of a head case, but I thought, this is like, we've got pictures of your face. Check that out, man. If you want us to erase this tape, just let us know.
All right.
Mr. Clerk?
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Richard Burkhart?
Here.
Ron Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Rick Malandra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Jim Rodecky?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Tom Simonian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We begin our council meetings, Ben, with a pledge of allegiance, and we'd like to ask your mom and dad to do us the honor of leading us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stand is one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Ben, I'm going to ask your mom and dad to join us at the podium for interpretation purposes and on the off chance you can't hear me, and also to share with the public some information. Now, we all know Ben Knute, but for those of you tuning in from home who aren't perhaps aware of his accomplishments, I've got the cheat sheet here right off of USA Triathlon. And I know Mr. Cummings, an avid triathlete yourself, will no doubt, former, well, never a former, right, Mike?
That's right.
This is highlighted, this is how many accomplishments Ben, it's incredible. Here's an interesting statistic. Did you know this, Ben? Check this out. The odds of making the Olympic team in the triathlon is one in 7,000.
Wow.
Fascinating.
Did I know that?
Yeah, isn't that amazing? The youngest of three Olympic triathletes, 23-year-old Ben Knute. Isn't that something? Hmm. Check this out, folks. Won both the draft legal sprint distance and Olympic distance titles at the 2013 USA Triathlon Collegiate National Championships, the 2015 USA Triathlon Elite National Champion, as a USA Triathlon National Team member. Holy moly. Let's see. Won a silver medal at the Tong-Yong ITU World Cup on October 20, or excuse me, 18th of 2014. Finished runner-up at the Sarasota Patco Sprint Triathlon Pan American Championships in 2012. Let's see, holy moly. Was ninth at the Holton Premium ITU European Cup. Now, your amateur triathlon career is pretty cool. You won the 2008 and 2010 USA Triathlon Junior Elite National Title and was the 2007 USA Triathlon Youth Elite National Championship winner. A five-time USA Triathlon All-American selection. You represented the U.S. at the 2009, 2010, and 2011 ITU Junior World Championship, a bronze medalist at the 2009 Pan American Junior Championship, and you won the 2008 16-19 age group world title. What else have you really done with your life, Ben? And of course, just about, what, about six weeks ago, I think it was, Mr. and Mrs. Knute, May 16th is the date?
That sounds correct.
May 16th, as I understand it, you were named to the 2016 Summer Olympic Team representing, of course, our country. So congratulations, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Ben, we have two special gifts for you this evening. One is on the press table, which you cannot see, but your mom and dad can. It is a City of Geneva flag, and we are asking the citizens of Geneva, the businesses of Geneva, and anyone who wishes to extend their good wishes to you to sign that flag. And then your mom and dad are going to bring that to you when they ship out August 9th.
Did you hear that, Ben?
Yeah, I did. That's awesome, I get my own flag?
Well, we actually need that back before the 2020 Games. We expect to see a photo of this flag above your bed at The Village.
That's done. I'll do it.
And then we have a very special gift for you as well. It's a gift on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Geneva. It's a gift that I'm going to ask your mom and dad to present, if you will, unveil, and that is right here. So, Mr. and Mrs. Knute, if you just so gingerly remove that flag, and this is again on behalf of the council and the community. Ben, it's a sign that says Ben Lives Here. It's going to be in Harbor Town Court. Attention was unbelievable. Does Dad want to tell Ben what the sign reads?
Ben, it's a sign that says, "Home of Ben Knute, 2016 Olympian Men's Triathlon."
Wow. Yeah, that takes it pretty real right there.
And that's going to be posted prior to the beginning of the Games and most likely St. Charles. Are you good with that, Ben?
Yeah, of course.
I love the delay. Ben, would you like to say something? We have a room full of national champions as well, some of the younger triathletes who just competed at the Games in Ohio, Westchester, Ohio, 11-time national champions, I believe the madness team is.
Is it 11?
Is it 11? Is there any words of inspiration and encouragement you'd like to share with these young men and women?
Um, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? They got lost a little bit there.
The MMTT kids team is here to support you, and so Mayor Burns wanted to know if you had any words of wisdom for them.
Yeah. Well, first off, I want to say congrats on their second place as a team at the national championship this past weekend.
Well, this is the youth team, Ben, so they are national champions.
Oh. Well, Ben, congrats on the national championship and just keep up the good work. I mean, for me, it was just, it's only become real in, I mean, the last few weeks, and there's no reason why all of you can't be sitting on the phone at a City Hall meeting years from now, so just keep up the good work. It seems like you guys are already on the right path.
Well said. You know, your grandma and grandpa are here, too. Are you guys going to Rio, Grandma and Grandpa?
No.
No? Mr. and Mrs. Knute, would you like to say anything?
Um, just like Mike said, it's overwhelming to have everybody here. Support has been amazing. Our friends are awesome. Our family is awesome. Thank you. It's been not the usual journey. Ben was never, you know, the star all the time, so he is right. Just be a hard worker and believe in yourself, and thank you to everyone. I feel like we owe you over and over and over for all your support. It's been really overwhelming. Nobody gives you training on how to be able to accept as much love, so thank you for that.
And I'll just repeat, thank you again, Mayor Burns. Thank you, the city council. These are really tremendous gifts. The sign is fantastic. The flag is a great gesture, and thank you, everyone, for coming. Again, the support that you showed Ben and to our family is great. This is a funny sport. It's been very good to our family, and I always tell Ben, my job, he's had a lot of success, and my job is to keep telling him, don't believe the hype. You're not as good as you think you are. So, it's working, right, Ben?
Yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ben, go back to training. Don't slack off. And by all means, ladies and gentlemen, joining us this evening, that flag is there for you to affix your signature and to send Ben the best of wishes. If you don't object as you sign that flag, we will continue our meeting, if that's okay. Does that sound good? Anything else, Eileen and Mike?
Thank you very much.
Oh, my gosh, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And Ben, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you so much. This is unbelievable to have this amount of support and to be able to just sit on the phone and hear everybody there. So I just wanted to thank everybody who's been a part of it. Everybody in this room is just as much a part of it as I am, so thank you so much.
Well said. Well said.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It would be nice if the family would stand next to the sign and someone would take their picture to get it on Facebook.
No, it's all yours, man. Come up closer. Come up way up here.
It's going to be enough of the...
Mike, you've got to be a sweetheart for the camera.
You look wobbly. You look wobbly.
Ben, we're hanging up now, okay?
All right, thank you.
Bye.
Yeah, maybe Carla, because hers, I saw hers.
Hi.
So proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Have wonderful...
Yeah.
I want you to say hi.
Eileen.
He's supporting.
Yes.
On our Facebook.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I suggest that we adjourn to closed session
to allow our special guests to continue signing the flag. So entertain a motion to go to closed session to discuss pending litigation offered by Singer, seconded by Sino. A roll call vote is in order.
Rick Malandra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Ron Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Microphones are off. I'll entertain a motion to return to open session by one of the council members. Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Sino makes the second. A roll call vote is in order.
Rick Malandra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Ron Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Microphones are off. I'll entertain a motion to return to open session by one of the council members. Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Sino makes the second. A roll call vote is in order.
Rick Malandra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian? Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Ron Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
We're back in open session, and we are on item number four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments by any member of the city council this evening? Item number five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council unless there is new and pertinent information by either a member of the community and/or a member of the council. I know Alderman Rodecky, you wanted to...
Yeah, I would ask that item F be removed, please.
11F.
11F is removed from the consent agenda. Without objection, motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. So moved. Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Aye.
Alderman Singer makes the second. Roll call vote is in order.
Rick Malandra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Ron Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
The motion passes.
We skip down to item number nine, other items in business. 9A is to recommend acceptance of fiscal year 2016-2017 first quarter goals report. A motion to accept would be in order. Alderman Sino makes the motion. Alderman Singer makes the second. Any questions or comments? If voice vote is sufficient, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $913,314.31.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as read. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Sino makes the second. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Rick Malandra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Ron Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Item 10 passes with nine affirmative votes, no nays, and one absent. We jump to item 11A. 11A is to approve Resolution Number 2016-65 approving a payment in lieu of required parking for the Gia Mia Pizza Bar located at 13 North Third Street. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
Alderman Cummings makes the motion. Alderman, I believe it was, Marx makes the second. This item was not on the consent because there was one no vote on the matter. Anybody else want to comment on the issue before us? Alderman Simonian?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I was the no vote, and I want to ask the council to reconsider our conversation last week. Couple things. Alderman Burkhart, who unfortunately isn't here, made some comments regarding personal guarantees and business and combining them or keeping them separate, whatever. I own four businesses, and there's nothing that I do, whether it's a bank loan, whether it's a lease, whether it's purchasing equipment, that I do not have to provide either a personal guarantee and/or collateral to, in order to get the loan. And I just, I'm just boggled by the fact that we're willing to, and I'm in 100, again, let me say, I'm on 100% support of the concept to help out this business owner, but it boggles my mind that we're willing to give out a $30,000 loan with no guarantees on the back end, especially when the business owner was okay with it providing a personal guarantee, and yet we turned around and said, no, that's okay. We'll still risk the taxpayers' money even though the owner is willing to give a personal guarantee, and we said no. It just, to me, just boggles my mind. So I, I'm going to try to amend this again for a five-year semi-annual equal payment with a either-or, a personal guarantee or return of the parking spaces in their original And again, I'm in, I'm in 100% of support of this. I love this concept. I love this outside-the-box thinking. It's a first time, from what I understand, we're doing this to help a business. I think the business is doing fabulous. I think it's going to knock it out of the park, but I just am mesmerized by the fact that the owner is willing to do this and we're not willing to accept it. So I make a motion to amend the, amend the item.
Well, hold on. Let me clarify what the amendment is. It's my understanding that the amendment on item 11A, which is Resolution Number 2016-65, is to amend the lieu of required, excuse me, payment in lieu of required parking as currently described as a three-year, $10,000 annual payment or equal payment thereto, to a five-year annual equal payments with a personal guarantee and/or should the business fail, that the parking spots be returned to the city in their original condition. Does that seem fair?
Does it seem fair?
I mean, does that seem...
Yeah, that's it.
I can't hear what you said.
That's it.
Mr. Singer, do you still offer the second? The amendment's on the floor for discussion.
Questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Having a conversation earlier this evening, I was led to believe that if the motion, if this issue had been passed as it stands, that the individual proprietor still would be liable for any costs related to the city, and if he did not so pay those costs in the form or matter, that he would, there would be a means of obtaining the funding through a collection agency. So somewhat, is this somewhat redundant to what you are asking here, Alderman Simonian?
I guess the question I have is, is this in the business's name? And if the business goes out of business, you can collect all you want, or is it in the individual's name? If it's in the individual's name, then we don't have to put a personal guarantee in, but I'm guessing it's in the business's name.
I'd like to ask the attorney representing Gia Mia, Ms....
Well, first of all, let me, let me clarify, if I could, Mr. Mayor, because this is in lieu of the physical parking spaces for this business, for Gia Mia Geneva, for this pizza bar. So it doesn't extend to any other business if someone else occupies that location if by chance this business were to go out of business. So there's no perpetual aspect to this granting of this. And I think, Mr. DeGroot's here, but I believe that this was negotiated really on, it's a two-year payback because there's $10,000 that's being paid by the time the occupancy permit for this plaza, or excuse me, this patio arrangement is completed, and then it's $5,000 each six months thereafter. So if my math is correct, it's really two years after the occupancy permit is issued.
That's correct. Those were the terms proposed by the owner of Gia Mia.
Okay, so it's, it's a two-year from the time that they're able to use the facility. I just wanted that clarification.
Mr. Rodecky?
And the spots really are acting as collateral because if they do not perform, we'll get the spots back, and they're not transferable to another business. Is that...
That's, that's my opinion. Now, we've also drafted today a memorandum of understanding that we would require the property owner, the business owner, to sign so that there's a written agreement that is reflective of what's in the resolution, as to the terms in the resolution. So if there were a default, there would be a written document that would show the consideration, that is, allowing the use of these three parking spaces and giving up these three parking spaces for the fee payment so that they could use it for business purposes.
Question?
All right. So I don't understand how we get the spaces back. My understanding is that if we're giving up these three spaces and they're going to basically put a patio over them, right? So how do we, should, should the worst-case situation occur and this business goes out of business, how does the city get those back?
I think you would, with a new owner?
Yeah.
I'd say you need three spaces.
You have to tell him the owner, you have to go in there and demolish whatever improvements were made.
Or pay, or pay the $30,000.
Alderman, sir?
Are you saying Attorney Radovich, that it sounds to me like that is sort of double-dipping. If a, if a new owner would come in, he would not be, he does not get the sense of what presently exists. He then, too, would have to deposit a $30,000 amount to the city? No, we're talking about in the situation where the $30,000 is not fully paid. Who would be responsible, as Alderman is asking us to, who would be responsible for making that payment? The person who is no longer presently as the owner or a new owner coming in? The scenario that's been set up here is that if there's a default by this prop, this business owner, and there's no guarantee, what would happen with the next business that goes in there? And what I'm saying is, I think the city's position would be that you, there's three spaces that were associated with this property, and if you're not going to use those three parking spaces and the full $30,000 hasn't been paid, then the new occupant would, would have to either pay or reestablish the three parking spaces. Pay the balance or... Yes. Oh, okay. Now I understand. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Simonian?
So once it's, once it's paid, counselor, then it's, it's part of the, part of the property, once the $30,000 is paid, so successive owners will, it will be part of the property?
That, I think that's what the ordinance, I mean, it really is what the ordinance says. I mean, it's $10,000 a space.
Yeah. And then so if, if, if we get to, in the unfortunate situation that they go out of business and then we can reclaim those three spots, what happens if, I mean, those spots are, you know, poles are put in, I mean, and we have to, do we have to cover that cost of reclaiming them? I mean, I mean, to take that patio out of patio mode and into parking mode?
Look, my, my, my vision here is that the... Look, my, my, my vision here is that the, the building permit for this patio is going to have as a condition this resolution.
Right.
And so is the occupancy permit for that patio.
Uh-huh.
So, the occupancy is tied to this agreement, and anybody else that comes after is, is gonna be subject to that occupancy permit with those conditions.
Right, but if...
If they say they don't wanna pay, what do we do?
Yeah, the, the, the next, the next tenant comes and says, "I don't, I don't want it," and then the city says, "Okay, fine, we'll take it over, and it's gonna cost us $15,000 to put it back into parking spot mode." I mean, I, I mean, there is that...
Well, I think in order to get the occupancy permit, they would either have to pay the rem, balance or return it to parking at their cost.
Oh, you mean the second, the second?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's tied to the occupancy permit.
Yeah, but I mean, you know...
So, they wouldn't get that permit?
So, does that make sense? You're gonna now put some poor guy who wants to come in and open a business and put this liability on his lap, when the current owner is willing to put it on his? I just don't get it. There's, there's the part that I just don't get.
Let's just clarify one thing. The owner of Gia Mie isn't gonna come in here and say, "Absolutely not, I'm not gonna cooperate with the city." His preference is absolutely not to give a personal guarantee. He's gone through a lot of hoops as it is, but no, he is going to cooperate with what the city council requires. I don't think it's appropriate, there is, absolutely has been articulated, no downside right now to the city of Geneva. He will have paid one-third by the time he gets an occupancy permit. The remaining balance is paid in two years, at most. If there's a balance due, a new user, a new tenant, has to pay the balance. There, there literally is not, I'm sure we can come up with all kinds of tangential scenarios where something horrific could happen, but the reality of this situation is, I don't think it's appropriate to additionally penalize somebody who's already paying in $30,000 to a fund, when in fact, this is solely a function of, had he brought in a piece of paper, which is worth nothing, that said he could park within 350 feet, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, and you wouldn't have any of the money, and there would be absolutely no mechanism for actually supervising whether those agreements, in which we have a license agreement, which can be terminated at any time, are actually being appropriately used. So, at the end of the day, I think this is really a win-win for the city. The only person who's being penalized in this is Mia Gia, but again, he's exceedingly cooperative and agreed to negotiate in good faith and to come up with a resolution that is beneficial for everyone.
Well, I, let me just add to Ms. McCracken's statement here, is that the ordinance has been there a while, so the $10,000 a spot has been public knowledge, so it's not really a penalty, it's the, it's the fee in lieu of...
It feels like a penalty, let's put it that way.
All right. But it's, it's, what's not a part of our ordinance is any gray areas around it, and that's what we're trying to fill in, the gray areas, if there can be some kind of installment method, and this has been the staff's attempt at doing that.
Well, can I respond, Mayor?
Of course.
Thank you. Well, I will respectfully disagree with you, Kate. One is, I don't think they're getting penalized, number one. You know, it is, it is what it is. Is it, I, like I told you last time, last week, I was a little setback when I saw $10,000 a spot myself. I would, if I was a business owner, it'd go, "Really?" But I, I also understand in the big picture, I mean, parking is a premium in downtown, so those are of value, and, you know, it's, there's gotta be some value, so that everyone isn't buying parking spots for, I mean, if they were $500, then we'd have no parking.
Right.
So, that's number one. Two is, the, the way that's written now, you know, his responsibility is to come up with the $30,000 all at once.
Mm-hmm.
This is actually a, not being penalized, it's being, sort of compromising a, that gray area that Chuck mentioned.
And certainly, that's something that the city council can do and, and say, "No, we won't agree with this payment plan."
And lastly, I bet, we would bet a dollar to a donut, if it was your money, you'd want a personal guarantee, or you would want some kind of guarantee in the event of default. And, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm responsible, this is taxpayers' money, and I'm responsible for making sure.
Then change the ordinance, then change the ordinance and say, anytime there's a payment in lieu, that payment in lieu will always be personally guaranteed.
Well, this is the first time we've done this.
But the, actually, you, that's...
In recent.
In recent, it's not the first time ever, but yes.
Yeah, we have done payment in lieu of multiple times over the years, and by way of history, for those of you who've been on the council longer, you may recall that, and I'm certain Kate recalls this as well, the payment in lieu of used to be about three grand.
Then it was 7,500.
Then it was 7,500, and we determined through our own analysis that it costs about 10 grand. In fact, it probably costs a little bit more to build a spot, to pave a spot, to maintain a spot than we were charging. So, we equalize that value, if you will. So, 10,000, no question, it's a big, big pill to swallow, absolutely. My own position, in my conversations with Mr. Gawi and others, is this council collectively and proudly, and I think correctly, state that we wanna be business-friendly. We wanna think creatively and critically about how we can not just attract, but help grow businesses that are doing well in Geneva. This is a perfect opportunity to say to a businessman and his family, who has virtually resurrected North Third Street, along with 25 North Co. Working, along with our antique store, along with our jewelry store and others, he has invested significant monies, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars, and now the city has an opportunity to say, "We'll meet you halfway," or the city has an opportunity to say, "Ain't good enough." I am not on the ain't-good-enough side. I'm on the side that this is a public-private partnership that's gonna succeed, and we should do it. We're all taxpayers. It is my money, and I think it's a great investment.
I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning the investment. I'm just trying to protect the downside risk. I'm in total concurrence with you. I totally agree. I'd be the first one. I mean, I'm the one that's always screaming pro-business. I'm the first one that would, I think this is brilliant, creative, outside-the-box thinking, and I don't have a problem with it at all. I'm just saying, what if the downside happens? What if there is a default? Do, can we put in a safety net to protect that investment? And that's all I'm saying. I, I'm 100% behind the investment. I think it's a great idea, I think it's fabulous. I'm just saying, I just think that we should put a, a safe net. And if everything that we are all saying, that Counselor is saying, that Mia Gia is saying, is correct, this all becomes a moot point, because all this will be paid and it'll be, all I'm saying is the, protecting the small likelihood of the what-if on the default side of this equation. That's all I'm trying to protect, but I totally agree with, with everything you said.
Alderman Malaja, then Alderman Bruno?
I'm trying to figure out what the downside risk to the taxpayer is. So, we, we are accepting payment in lieu of parking for three spaces with a payback of two years. So, if this business goes out of business within two years, the, the taxpayer is out, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the taxpayer is out exactly, so we're not hitting up the taxpayer for a dollar, saying, "You give me money so that this guy can park." We're technically removing three spaces from their ability to park there, but I don't know how many people are parking there now, and I think that if there is a, if the business is reaping the benefit of those spaces during the two years, at the end of which they go out, the taxpayer has benefited from the fact that he's reaping that benefit, because the patio is there and being used, it's being used by shoppers and restaurant, people who are eating and dining and things like that. So, I really don't see the downside on this one as, as badly as, as I think Tom does. I, I don't like setting a precedent, saying, "We're gonna make you pay $10,000," but we don't really mean it. I think that that's a bad precedent to set, and so I accept Kate's point about we should change the ordinance, so that we get what we need upfront and we avoid the, you know, battle like this, but, but for right now, we've negotiated in good faith with a, a way to pay the money off over time. We get payback in two years, and I'm not seeing the downside as being all that harmful, or I'm having trouble seeing the downside anyway. There is a, there is sort of a principle to it that says, "I'm not accepting, I won't get all the money that I've negotiated for," but at the end of the day, the Geneva taxpayer doesn't miss that, number one, and number two, if that restaurant owner is screwing us by reaping the benefit of that, then we're benefiting from that as well, because it's added restaurant business.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just looking at the concept, I think, I really see little chance that we're actually being exposed here. I mean, the, the business model, everyone I know loves it, I've been there, two years are a pretty short timeframe. What I come back to is, as you alluded to, you know, if some business owners are very well-heeled, they can absorb a lot, some of them are really putting themselves out there and, and at risk, and I think to, I, I think to open up the idea that a family that's trying to put together a business might be liable, I think is the opposite of business-friendly. I think there's some, some businesses that just, this is too risky, I'm not gonna bite this nut. So, I would, I would prefer the motion as, as written in the agenda. Thank you.
The amendment is on the floor still, so Alderman Cummings?
I, I think you've all heard me talk about risk-reward ad nauseam, right? So, you know, I look at this and I think, somewhere between lots of risk and zero reward for the city and, and, and no risk whatsoever, and tremendous reward is, is where things tend to lie. I like this as presented, I'm comfortable with it, it's not perfect. I think as we become more, if we go all the way over to completely risk-averse, completely without risk, we also gain in onerousness. How's that for a new word? And, and I think that we don't want more onerousness put upon the businesses here. I think this is a very fair offer. If it were a 10-year repayment period, obviously, the risk of, of the business going out of business over 10 years is more than the risk of the business going out of business over two years. And I think a, a two-year payback with 30% upfront is, is very reasonable. We have reduced our risk, and I'm not even sure that we have that much risk there when we're potentially putting the cost of a patio or demo onto the next business owner, if everything should fall through. But we've put, we've, we've, we've taken a lot of the risk out of this, we've given good flexibility to the business owner that seems to be acceptable. I think we go ahead with this. I, I think that it makes sense, it's pro-business, it's creative, it's out-of-the-box thinking, it's not taking a lot of risk, and I think it shows good flexibility. So, I'd like to see it passed as it stands on the agenda. Thank you.
Alderman Kilberg on the amendment?
Yeah, I, yeah. I think the problem is, we got three parking spaces, if the, if the business goes out, we pull out the borders, and we're back in business again, we've got three parking spaces. I don't see where the risks involved here. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have three parking spaces. If the business fails, we got...
Three, three parking spaces back. I guess my question, as it relates to this, is why is this with the business and not with the property owner? Because I think the property, you know, you know, it, I see where it really should be with the property owner, because, you know, the property owner's gonna transcend maybe multiple businesses. If you look up and down Third Street, we've got new businesses that go in, businesses come, businesses go, but usually, the property owner is one of the, is the constant. So, I'm just thinking that, you know, this is, should be negotiated as part of the lease or the, the contract, I'm thinking. I, I mean, that's the way I see it. You know, to be negotiating with these businesses, the next, next one's gonna come in, let's say, five years or 10 years, then all of a sudden, we go through this exercise again. "No, we don't need that patio." Well, then, then we're going through this exercise again. I'm just saying that I think it would be a lot cleaner and a lot, it'd serve the city a lot better if, if these would be with the property owner rather than the, the tenant, for what that's worth.
Any other comments or questions on the amendment? Alderman Simonton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just keep in mind that, fast forward this tape, and someone wants to buy six spots and 10 spots and 12 spots, and you're talking $120,000, and then we say, "Well, we're gonna need a personal guarantee, or we're not gonna go out." Just remember that whatever we set the precedent here is the precedent we're gonna set for the future, and they're not always gonna be three spots. So, my, I think the easiest part of this equation is, quite honestly, a personal guarantee. To answer your question, Alderman Bruno, I guarantee you, there's a personal guarantee on his lease that he signed, and I'll guarantee you, there's a personal guarantee or there's some sort of collateral on the money borrowed from the, from the bank to open up that business. And I don't think that, quite honestly, three parking spots is going to say, "Well, you know what? I'm not going to do this deal because of the three parking spots, because it has nothing to do with the original business." This is expanding the business that's already existing, and I think most of these parking scenarios, in situations like this, you're gonna open a patio. I mean, it's gonna be an expansion, not gonna be the initial purchase of. But I just want folks to keep that in mind. And again, I'm 100% behind this, and I agree with Kate in the fact that our ordinance should read something that has a standard for this, whether it's a personal guarantee or whether it's some sort of a percentage per year paid, all has to be paid in three, just to keep it in sync with moving forward, because I can see where this is going, the next person that comes up and wants to buy parking spots and wants to start negotiating a deal with no personal guarantees, and, you know, we sit back and say, "Oh, well, Gia Mie is fabulous, it's in great operations, doing great. This person doesn't seem to be faring that well, but yet wants to buy parking spaces over the next three years or five years or whatever," and I would hate to get into a situation where we start, we start deciding on what businesses are worthy of in lieu of. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Radovich, you want to?
Well, I, I just, I guess I'm speaking for the staff a little bit, Alderman. We don't see this as precedent-setting. I think the petitioner asked for an expedited solution because of the season, and so I think, Mr. DeGroot, certainly my, my feeling was that, yeah, the ordinance probably needs some adjustment, and this is an opportune time to do that, but this was because this particular petitioner wanted something expedited, and therefore, it was the request through the Community Development Department for it.
Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Marks?
Now, I'll yield my time.
So, how, how does the ordinance read now? All payment upfront, or is it totally unclear? I guess that's what I'm unsure of. For the parking spaces. I mean, I'm not sure, how, what does it read now? Does it require all payment, or is it leave, is that the issue? We don't know.
It doesn't specify, it just says that, it just specifies the amount of $10,000.
Okay.
And it, it says that the, the request to accept payment in lieu of is what gets forwarded to the city council.
Okay.
It doesn't even necessarily say that the agreement has to go to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, to counsel, so by our discussing a payment plan here, you don't think that exposes us to being able to deny payment plans in the, in the future?
Look, ordinances, city codes are amended all the time, laws change all the time. That's your discretion, that's part of the legislative prerogative, and, and that's what I'm saying. You can, you can direct the staff to make, to, to propose an amendment to this code section with regard to payments, or reaffirm that in the future, everything is full payment for payments in lieu. Obviously, you can defeat this resolution as well, that's your prerogative.
Thank you.
Alderman Singer?
Well, the acquisition of these additional parking spaces certainly have a reflection on the owner's property... on the owner's property values, and then in turn, possibly, the value of being additional property taxes coming forward.
Sure. There's a building permit, and an occupancy permit, and our good friend at the township is going to examine this, and they'll do their job.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Radecki?
Beating the dead horse one more time here. I dismounted a long time. You know, I'm going to oppose the amendment for a lot of the reasons that the mayor discussed. But also, you know, this thing about personal guarantee, you know, personal guarantee is a piece of paper as well, and you've still got to go after it anyway. It would be my suggestion that if we do rewrite the ordinance, that perhaps we consider that in lieu of the entire payment upfront, that a performance bond maybe be established in the amount of X. Nice and easy, quick and clear, and be done with it. Because, you know, to say that I'll guarantee it personally, if you don't have any assets, then we're no better off with a personal guarantee as the business itself. So with that, I will dismount. Thank you.
On the amendment, ladies and gentlemen, an aye is to support the amendment, a nay is to not support the amendment. If the amendment passes, then we vote on the motion as amended. If the amendment fails, then we vote on the original motion. Mr. Clerk? Craig Malagia?
Nay.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
What's the count, Mr. Clerk? Six-three. Six-three. The motion as amended is defeated. We're back to the original motion. The original motion on the floor is to agree with the presentation and the details as presented by professional staff, and in support of the attorney present representing GME.
I do agree that we should move forward, so the business owner can move forward with his patio, or whatever his plans are, but I do think we should look at this ordinance sooner than later, because like Alderman Simonian said, I think everybody's going to be looking to buy parking spaces.
Anyone else? I think the biggest mistake we can find ourselves in as a community, particularly as a legislative body, is to create an atmosphere where success occurs, and then step back and say, "Wow, that's a lot of success. How can we nickel-and-dime everybody to get what we need out of it?" That scares the hell out of me. With that said, take the roll. Craig Malagia?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to one. New business, ladies and gentlemen? Any new business tonight by anybody? No, I'm sorry. Excuse me, item F. Yeah. Alderman Radecki?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked that item F be removed, because I do have a business relationship with the petitioners. It has nothing to do with this particular item, nor any business within the city of Geneva, but since I do have a business relationship with them, I would ask to be recused from the vote on this, and step out of the room while the council considers it.
No objection. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 11F is to approve Resolution Number 2016-66, recommending preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval for the Woodland subdivision, located at the southwest corner of Ray Street and South Batavia Avenue. Motion second. Motion by Singer, seconded by Marx. Questions or comments for either Mr. DeGroot, the applicant, and/or Stephanie, our city attorney? Pretty clear-cut, no pun intended. A motion made and seconded, voice, excuse me, roll call vote, Mr. Clerk? Craig Malagia?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we're at new business. Any new business by anybody at the desk? The audience is leaving, so is there a motion to adjourn? Motion adjourned. Alderman Simonian offers the motion. Alderman Marx, I believe it was, offers a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Radecki's back.